This is the school meeting to order on Monday, December thirteenth, twenty twenty one at seven o'clock P M. Members present are David, Kenny, Brett, Jennifer, and Susie. This time we move on to the pledge of allegiance and the prayer by Mr. Will Rhodes.
Mister, sounds good.
Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Dear God, thank you for everybody here today. I pray that you can just be with them and help them to make the best decisions for our school and community. Praying just be with us and help us to have a good second semester of school. Amen.
Amen.
Thank you so much, Bill.
Thank you guys, thank you for having me.
Thank you.
Thanks for being here.
Okay, this time for approval of minutes from the November eighth, twenty twenty one meeting. My name is Kenny, second by director, approved minutes from the November eighth, twenty twenty one meeting. Kenny?
Yes.
Brett?
Yes.
David?
Yes.
Jennifer?
Yes.
This time we move on to, and Susie, yes, I'm sorry, and move on to the approval of encumbrances and change orders.
Okay, if you look at page one, you'll see those first four, two ninety-seven through three hundred, that's on our capturing kids' arts trip to reimburse for meals for those folks. We had a total of twenty-one go to that. And actually, those, three of those four, sometimes this was Matt Jones, our middle school principal, and he had his school credit card. And it works out a lot better for everybody when they eat together. Just put it on that credit card and do one reimbursement. So he did that for us, and that keeps us from having to deal with individual reimbursements a lot of times. Number three oh one is, just like it says, non-touch LCD panels. This is, these are panels for classrooms bought out of federal monies, five eleven and five eighty-seven. If you go on down to three oh five and three oh six, this is something new. We started filing with Medicaid last spring in the last part of the year, and we just had them file on a few of our, be a few of our speech students that were reimbursable and just see how it worked. Because last year, we contracted with this PCG. And so we've gotten two reimbursements back. One of them, the first one was for like a thousand dollars. This last one was for about, it was about fifty-three hundred dollars, I believe. And then, when we receive that money, there's a certain percentage of that money then goes back to the Oklahoma Healthcare Authority. And then, a small percentage then goes to PCG because they do all of our paperwork for us. So out of that fifty-three hundred, we, we would clear about thirty-eight hundred dollars for that filing there. But those two encumbrances, they're just blankets. That's not an actual amount that we're writing to those two organizations, that's just a blanket. So we hope to see that reimbursement starting to come in on a regular basis. Three oh seven for Scholastic, that's books for our Twenty-First Century program. Look on down, three ten dugout supply. We bought shirts for, looked a lot like that one for, for our staff this year. And that's to take care of that. Three eleven through three thirteen, those three individuals, they went to a gear up meeting in Oklahoma City. And then, three nineteen, Hilton Garden Inn, that was for Ms. Garmin. She went to the O A E S P conference, which is the, basically, the Oklahoma Elementary School Principals Association. So that's her motel for that. On the next page, it just says one item, middle school math coordinator slash mentor. This is to pay that stipend. Now, this, this amount, after we refigured it, was a little inflated, so it'll actually come out, oh, about thirty-five, thirty-eight hundred. But we just left it at that amount. That's to pay stipend out of five eleven for Valerie Lewis.
Do we pay like a per diem for expenses and try like a government per diem or actual expenses, or how do we?
If it's overnight, it's a per diem. If it's day travel, then, and that would be, overnight would be turned into lending and paid per diem. If it's a day trip, then it's turned into Melissa, and it goes through payroll. So it, it has taxes and everything held out of that reimbursement.
Okay, but it's just like the government allow?
Right, for the amount they get.
Right.
Right. Then on the third page, we have, thank goodness, we have a few more high school students that are on the Volker rehab program this year that they helped throughout the schools in different roles, custodial work and so forth. And so, just encumbered amount to make those payroll. And then that's reimbursed to us from Volker rehab on that third page. And that's the encumbrances.
Change orders, you got a great, just the one change order?
Yes, on the high school rehab. Sorry, I've done that before, that's a change order, not a purchase.
Money.
Okay, we hear that. Make a motion about approval of encumbrances.
My name is Kenny, second by Jennifer, to approve the encumbrances and change orders. David?
Yes.
Jennifer? Brett?
Yes.
Kenny?
Yes.
And Susie, yes. Move on to other financial reports.
Okay. And we'll look up here, and we'll go back and, and clear up something from last month also. So this is what we look at each month. So we end up the month, if you look, one point two, one five million in cash balance. Here's our investment at Farmer State once again. So, and then less outstanding warrants. So we end the month with one million, six hundred and fifty-two thousand in the general fund. And then we're still sitting steady right now at nine hundred and eighty-nine in building fund. Child nutrition, one sixty-two. Now, the question, and it's pretty simple, once I looked at it last, last time. And I'm going to use this because this is the question we had last month, and it's going to be similar in any of these categories. So this is going to be our cash on hand that we're talking about right here. So we have fifteen hundred, eleven dollars cash on hand. Add monthly receipts of eighty-three dollars, seventy-four cents into the gifts fund. Total cash, fifteen ninety-four. Then you go down here, out of that eighty-three, we purchased eighty dollars went into a purchase of C D or into a now account. We'll look at that here in just a second. So that puts us back down after that purchase to fifteen, fourteen, eight. And then investments, down here, we have, in investments, and we'll look at those broken down here in just a second. In cash on hand, but investments, fifteen to ten, here's where we moved that, we made that eighty-dollar purchase that went into investments, which gave us this amount in the end. And then, if we look over here, you can see, here's our C D, these are all of our investments right now. Here's our half-million-dollar C D that we purchased here a while back. And then, that last column over here, here's a list of these, and it will add up to that amount on the previous page. So right now, First National Bank, the Henderson Memorial Scholarship, there's a balance of fourteen thousand, that's in a C D. And then, First National Bank, Delbury Memorial Scholarship, here's your balance, twelve hundred and ninety dollars in a savings account. And then, First National Bank, Henderson Memorial Account, now account, five hundred and fourteen dollars. And I'm not sure, I think this is a clearing account for this scholarship account. And that's the way they elected to do that. So, and then the last one, First National Bank of Stigler, there's a thousand dollars that was given to us in our agreement at the beginning of this school year from Love Bottling. And that'll go for scholarships at the end of the year. Here's our, kind of where we are financially for the year compared to last year. Our, for November, our total payroll was seven hundred and thirteen thousand as compared to six eighty-nine last year. That's a difference of twenty-three thousand, seven hundred and sixty-five. So with our stipend earlier in the year, we're, we're above this year more than last year by this amount, two hundred and one thousand. We're down in bills, two hundred and ninety-four thousand. So right now, I'm sorry, our November bills were a hundred and thirty-four, six, compared to last year, a hundred and thirty-two. So we spent eighteen hundred and ninety-four dollars more this year than last year in November. So it took a little bit about out of our cushion here, but we're still ahead this year, ninety-three thousand. We talked about these, you can kind of reference these from month to month down at the bottom. This is the most important because this is what I look at to make sure that we pay our assistant principal at the elementary school about half of her salary out of this Twenty-First Century. So if we didn't pay that, it would be an obligation to the general fund because we'd have to pay her. But this year, she, about half of her responsibilities are Twenty-First Century, so we pay about half of it out of that. So let's say that that's, for this month, that really should be about thirty-one thousand. And this is all revenue that will be used to help us offset this additional salary amount for this year. So still in good shape. Just going to bring this up just every few months to kind of look at our child nutrition expenditures and our child nutrition claims. And here's kind of what we're looking at right now on our child nutrition expenditures year-to-date with our payroll and our bills, is three ninety-seven, one forty-five. And now that went up and down, this goes across, this is this year's, right here. Our claims this year so far, four hundred and thirty-five thousand, nine hundred and fifty-two. You can kind of see, as compared to this time last year, how many more meals we're serving this year. Quite a bit to this point because just more of a robust after-school program and, and different things that are going on. But the difference in the child nutrition claims and the expenditures is about thirty-eight thousand dollars. So two years ago, at the end of the year, we carried over about a hundred and sixty thousand in child nutrition at the end of the year. Last year, about two thirteen. And so with where we're at right now, if we ended the year, we would carry over about two hundred and fifty. Where that's significant is that when we go back to our regular feeding program, can we still pay the additional people we're paying out of child nutrition? That will allow us cushion to be able to do that for several years. So that's kind of where we're at right now on other financial questions.
Catch this one question, sorry, and I know I asked this everybody.
Sure.
But on that, the availability?
Do I answer correctly?
Maybe. And eventually I'll remember it, so I won't have to ask you nevermind. That one report, does it still reflect the grant funds that we have available? I know we haven't, you have to do the projects or whatever, then you get the grant month, grant funds, but I, I remembered those numbers being way different than that.
Okay, so right now, I can kind of tell you, on this one, this is, this is a twenty-four thousand dollar grant, okay? Year-to-date, we've claimed that much, okay? This Twenty-First Century, we're going to spend, we're going to spend about, I believe it's about a hundred and ninety-seven, no, I'm sorry. I believe it's about two hundred thousand that's in Twenty-First Century budget, that's budgeted towards salaries. And that's where we are right now. Our, our total budget for the year Twenty-First Century is two hundred and sixty thousand dollars. But that's, that's with this and buying materials and stuff too. But no, this isn't going to reflect how much we have for that grant. But this one's going to be about twenty-four thousand. Twenty-First Century, our total yearly budget for that is two hundred and sixty. This school counselor is a three-year grant for ninety-six thousand dollars, so thirty-two thousand a year. ESRS, nothing here, we're not using any of that. This ESRS three, if you remember, we had to use twenty percent of that total amount for learning loss. These are three Excel teachers.
Thank you.
Our three Excel teachers, whoop, right there. And the other half of this school counselor are L P Cs. Salary goes into that. So those three Excel teachers and that counselor, half of that counselor's salary is that sixteen thousand for. But no, our, our additional grants for this year is roughly, I think it's about four hundred and eighty-nine thousand dollars. But we have to claim it as we spend.
Right, right.
Those numbers there at the end, your five fifty-two, seven ninety-five, do those correlate back to our budget that we pass? Are those numbers on that?
Yes, the estimates are on there.
Yeah, the estimates are, so you can take that seven ninety-five number on that ESRS three, go back to that budget that we've, and it'll show you the estimated total number that we're going to get from ESRS three money, should correct.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah. As we, as we spend it, claim it, get reimbursed.
I just can't, I can never remember what's available, you know, what can we draw on, or what can we claim, the total amount is what I, so.
Right. And really, to look back at that budget, and that gives us either clear, here's how much we have in this account, or in, in grants, an estimated amount because we don't know, you know, here's what we're awarded.
Why haven't we used any of the ESRS two?
Well?
Even year-to-date?
In salaries.
Oh, okay, okay.
Now, let's see, I mean, we haven't used any year-to-date. Now, we will, when we do this construction, and then we pay the bills on it, and then get the claim back.
That's what, I guess, because where I'm good, like that ESRS two or three, the, the amount that's available is in the millions, right? And that's, and that's the numbers I'm looking for.
Right.
Uh, I want to know what's available, and, and, I mean, I know, we need to know what has been drawn upon already too, but I.
And if you look at the estimate of needs and the budget, what it will show, if you remember this, I believe this is right, I believe we put, in general fund, we appropriated, it was, I think, three or four hundred thousand into the general fund. Because we just wanted to play it safe. We ordered those two new buses and all this. If we come out by the end of the year and we need to use some of that for that type of thing, we can. Then we put, it was eight hundred and something thousand, we proportioned for building fund. Now, next year, we don't need that four hundred, we can change that. We can put it all in building fund if we want to at the beginning of the year, starting with that estimate needs and then into our budget. And then, ESRS three, we, in our estimate of needs and budget, we put seven hundred thousand because twenty percent of our allotment was like six hundred and eighty thousand dollars that we have to spend on learning loss, okay? And that's what, a lot of that's going into these salaries right there.
Any of these money going to like upgrade our virtual schooling or on this ESRS money? Does that, any of that go towards, I don't know how you would upgrade it, but I know now it's, we're not really doing it. So, I mean, I guess, are we planning to upgrade that type of learning, or I, I don't know what this?
Yeah, and we're, we're one-to-one, so what, you know, every kid, every student has a Chromebook. We're putting Formidian boards, that kind of thing, we're progressing and switching out. Smart, the old, which is now old technology, right Dennis, just having to have a technology guy back there.
And that comes out of?
That generally is going to start coming out, Title I money is a different, because we've got, because every organization, oh, they need technology. So a lot of it's earmarked for technology. So we use that first, and before we get into the ESRS money, we'll technology.
Good.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Do you want your seat back now?
Yeah.
Other financials.
Okay, this time we move on to public comment. Board of Education invites public comment at this point in the regular meeting. A, comments concerning agenda items in accordance with policy B E D dash R. No one present for that. Information items, superintendent's reports.
Okay, and real quick, just on COVID numbers, as of Friday, I looked at those numbers Friday. We only had one in quarantine, and that's, that'd be a voluntary quarantine. And that was at the middle school, had one student, excuse me, and that was a parent that had tested positive outside of the school. And then, we sent out, there's not that much really in the evenings, like I thought there would be, leading up to the Christmas break. But, you know, they're having band concert tonight, so we're missing that. But one thing on the calendar, and I think I've talked to everyone, but this Friday, we have, I'm just calling it, faculty and staff appreciation. And so we'd like to invite the entire board, if you could, anyone that can to be there. I think it's going to be, we're attempting to make that a good day of just appreciation and not only our faculty, but our staff. We're having some speakers come in for our students. And so we're inviting our retired faculty. I think we sent out letters to fifty-eight retired faculty members, so that should be fun. And some of these that, that share their Stigler story during that day will not be sharing about current faculty, they'll be sharing about a lot of those retired faculty members.
Will they be recognized?
Uh, the retired, yeah, we'll, we'll have them, now, I won't know some of them, maybe, but, but there'll be a lot there, and then we're going to have lunch after, and that gives a chance for everybody to kind of fellowship and visit. And then, it was today, we had sixty-something gifts to give out as door prizes and things throughout that to the faculty and staff. So that's a two-year-running tradition now. If we get through Friday, to just, I believe they need a day where we just, and right before Christmas is a good day to just appreciate our folks for their hard work.
But last year, it was mainly virtual, so it was.
Yeah, we had a big set right here.
Yeah, we had, yeah, and it was, it was a great turnout as far as the gifts, and I think everybody really, really enjoyed it.
We have a, one of the things I was looking at today, and I would have failed it, but we put out a, we had all of our twenty-seven, or twenty-seven, twenty-eight new employees write something about themselves, send it back to us that people probably wouldn't know. And we were, I think they might have sent it out today, sent out a quiz to faculty and staff, multiple choice, Google form. And some of them, most of them, I couldn't answer, I would have failed it. But we're going to have those people up, and then, you know, I was, we have this present one that no one answered correctly one year. What was it?
I was the national champion for a rifle shooting contest.
No one in that party got that right.
I think we had two, but it was because they helped me move and they saw my gun. They're like, what are these for? It's like why they would have known it. Yeah, that's the only way that they knew it, so.
You're not packing right now, right?
Because he's pretty good aim. But we're going to bring them up, and then we'll kind of go through that. Who was national rifle champion, you know, and they can step forward, and then we'll give a big prize to whoever got the most right. So that one's probably going to be fun, to find out a little bit about our new employees. But that's superintendent's report.
Where are you having that bunch in?
Assembly of God.
Okay.
And we're going to have coffee and donuts, eight fifteen till nine, and it'll start at nine.
And it's open noon and afternoon?
It's kind of open-ended because we've got, we have five speakers. And then giving away stuff, we got a video to show between speakers, this game, you know, different things. We're hoping to be at lunch by eleven-thirty, maybe, hopefully, so, but, yeah, I mean, it's kind of go with who eats, however quick, stay as long as you want, you know, so we won't leave up where people have time to visit and not feel pressured, you know? Or they can head out anytime, so.
All right, it's time we move on to action topics. A, consideration of the implementation, implement, implement, implementation of competitive esports program at the Stigler High School.
I had to read that, I didn't know what that.
I did too, I had to read it. Well, I've told some of you that, oh, it's been three or four years ago, I had two boys come in my office at the high school, and they real serious, and I'm thinking, what is it, what's going on? And we just have a question, okay, what is it? Do we start an esports team? And I said, well, the first thing we have to consider is, what is an esports?
Yeah.
So, but I just, on the news, I guess they just had the state championship, OSSAA championship at Union High School, and they have quite a facility. But I'm going to let, Katrina and Dennis are here tonight, and we're going to propose that Katrina be the coach, and then Dennis is going to be the co-coach. And, but Katrina, could you tell us a little bit about the program?
What we're looking to do is basically talk to kids about what their digital presence is going to be like. There's a lot of kids, when they hear, oh, esports, that means we're going to play video games all the time. Well, yes and no. We're going to talk about college and what these colleges are going to do. Colleges have started esports teams, and I've already talked with one college, and they said, if you'll start this, we'll start recruiting your kids. And so they'll get scholarship money, they'll get all kinds of stuff like that. And we're going to talk to them about, you know, how their language should be done on, online stuff. Because some of you parents that have kids that play video games, probably not the best language coming out of that bedroom sometimes. We'll talk to them about that and sportsmanship. This will also allow us to get kids involved that have never been involved in anything. Because so many of kids that play video games don't know anything about football, other than what they can do here. They can't play an instrument, they feel just like they're in school and it's in a rut, and they're just going. This will allow us to get ahold of these kids and get them on a Stigler team and feel like they're a part of our school. And that's what we're really wanting to do. What would you like to add?
I guess I'm the video game guy, so, uh, a lot of these games that the. I guess I'm the video game guy, so, uh, uh, a lot of these games that are out there, you know, the parents are just sitting there thinking that they're wasting their money on all the consoles or the games and stuff like that and the kids are just never gonna do anything with it. Well, here's an opportunity to actually be able to get an education while playing video games. Cause some of these kids are really good, but they're just sitting there and they're not doing anything with their time or anything like that, they're just wasting it. And, uh, but this will just give them an opportunity to take their skills and move on to the next level. Because there's more than just, uh, playing video games that deals with esports. Cause I mean, if you look at the whole big picture, you got graphic designers that come out of that because they're doing stuff like that, trying to promote their team. And then they have, uh, musicians that come in and, you know, they're trying to put music to their intro videos and, cause you can put all the videos on YouTube. You can stream on Twitch, uh, and then not only that, some of the kids get ideas on how to create their own video games. And then they gotta learn how to code and all that stuff. And so, it just points them in a different direction than just staying in the bedroom in the dark and everything. To actually bring them out into the light and saying here, we can actually make something of ourselves besides just playing video games.
And they get scholarship, uh, college scholarships for that. They're offering those, I know that Mr. Faulkner was talking about that at Carl Albert.
Carl Albert's one that I talked to.
Yes, they were talking about that and he was, he was speaking about that at the chamber meeting last week, a couple of weeks ago. And I was talking about starting that program there.
And I was, uh, I'm probably still a little bit, but a little, uh, flip a coin on where I am sometimes on it. Because when the boys talked to me, I thought, okay, what we battled is a sedentary lifestyle and all this. But then the kids I've dealt with as high school principal, what do you do when you go home? I go in my bedroom, I play video games. And what we're talking about is a kid that suffers from depression. And we know what an epidemic that is, but I think this is what I, what shines for me is the possibility of getting that kid out of that bedroom, keeping him here, interacting, getting success, you know, other than just in his, and that's foreign to me, you know? But it's, it's, it's out there and it's things that kids are going through. And it gives them kind of a niche, it makes them feel like a Stigler panther too, and, uh.
Encourage them to keep their grades up because you can, you don't wanna be ineligible.
Exactly. And then we have a, right now, we have a, I think it's a seventeen thousand dollar grant available to us to equip this. So, we have that to kind of take care of.
That was my next question, is what's the cost?
We're gonna try to limit the cost as much as possible this year because there is the O E S L, the Oklahoma Esports League, which is a free league. So, we won't have to pay any kind of fees to join the league and participate in any of the games. There are other leagues out there which, uh, I think it's Play Versus that O S S A A is using, which is sixty-four dollars per student. And then there's also, you have fees upon that for, to play the video games, which is a per-seat video game. So, if you're playing Overwatch, that's a five-member team and it's like, uh, fifty or sixty dollars per student to play that game. So, we're gonna try and keep it as free as possible. With, uh, Oklahoma Esports League, they offer like ten or fifteen different games and, uh, some of those games are free to play, like, uh, Rocket League. You don't have to pay any money to download the game and play it. All you gotta do is create a free account on whichever system you're using, so, uh, so like I said, we're gonna try and keep it as free, as low cost as possible, so that way we can get our feet wet and kind of figure out what we're doing and, and everything without trying to spend a whole lot of money. Now, in years to come, may have to spend a little bit more money, but, uh, as of right now, I'm trying to keep it as low as possible.
What about equipment?
Yeah.
That's where the seventeen thousand is coming into play. We have six gaming PCs that are coming in through that. Uh, we have two PlayStation fours that we've already received, uh, and then, uh, we have two switches, Nintendo switches that we've got and two more that we're waiting on. And then also, if we haven't fully decided on whether we want to do this or not, but students could possibly even bring their own equipment and actually play on their own equipment.
And the, uh, what we have right now going in tonight is formation of a club where they could stay after school and do that, and that's part of the grant. Then this is to have a competitive team to go out and compete.
So, it won't be like during classroom time, okay, will it eventually move to that?
It could eventually if, 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 you know, the school decides to. Uh, Europe has sent me a curriculum that we could use and, uh, it's.
And get class credit for it?
I mean, like I said, it would depend on the school wise, but it has curriculum that is, you know, not just the video gaming aspect of it. Mostly it's like nutrition and exercise and how important that is to your video game. And then also like, uh, digital life and how you present yourself online and like all the backs, background things, not just playing the video game. So, I haven't even, even scratched the surface of that. I've kind of played and looked at it, but there's so much in there.
Do you know any other schools that are doing this?
Yes, I've, uh, I know in our area alone, I know Salasol is, Wilberton is Buffalo Valley, um, who else was?
Atoka.
Atoka is a really big one that, uh, showed us their esports stuff.
We went to go watch, watch tournament there.
Yeah, we went and watched a really nice tournament there. Uh, my friend from Buffalo Valley was there and he had two kids there. And I knew the two kids from academic team and they never spoke whatsoever at academic team. But during this, I watched them and Jerry even told me, watch these kids and see what happens. And they were up in the front talking to other kids constantly all day. Then they ate lunch with other kids and were playing games and talking. And then they'd come over and talk to me and I'm like, okay, you have never even spoken and now you're just talking and talking. And then I watched as other teams would come over and talk to them about, hey, you could do this different, you could do this different. And they were almost giving hints and clues on how to beat each other. You'd never see that on a football field. You wouldn't watch the other team walk up to you, hey, you should have tackled this guy instead of this one. And they were helping the kids do better and win. And so, there was such sportsmanship and everything between the teams. Even when Jerry's two boys were up playing against each other, all the other schools were cheering for those two boys. And it was so neat to watch. So, I know those schools and, I mean, there's just so many more that are starting to do this. This gear up is trying to get more in this area to do it, so.
Are you gonna try to stick with one, like Xbox or Playstation or, or do all of them?
We're gonna see what the kids are interested in.
But more than likely, we're probably gonna focus more on PC gaming rather than the consoles, because that's more what the colleges are doing. Uh, I'd like to get more consoles involved because it's.
Like a donation of the consoles too?
The thing is.
New products or?
A brand new Playstation five is five hundred dollars. A gaming PC is two thousand, sixteen hundred dollars to two thousand dollars. So, if a parent is wanting to buy something for their child, more than likely, they're gonna go console. And a lot of the games that we're playing like Rocket League and, uh, Overwatch, they're cross-platforming, meaning that you can play it on PC, Playstation, Xbox, Nintendo Switch, and you can play against each other with those different platforms. But, uh, yeah, we're probably gonna focus primarily on PC gaming because that's more what the colleges do. But I'd like to get more consoles in just because it's a cheaper version to where students could possibly even go out and buy their own and actually play at home too. Because, I mean, we can do some scrimmages and matches from the house, rather than having everybody come up, you know, into the classroom and, and play. So, I don't know if that really answered your question or not, but.
It's not pong, I'm not gonna know much about it.
We're not gonna have a tar even this round.
That's an adult quiz bow, you have an adult tar.
Implement competitive esports program at Stigler High School.
I'll second.
Motion made by Kenny, seconded by Jennifer to implement, um, competitive esports program at Stigler High School. Kenny?
Yes.
Jennifer?
Yes.
Brett?
Yes.
David?
Yes.
And Susie, yes. Action topic B, annual reevaluation and consideration of Indian policies and procedures.
Okay, and this is our policy that we had last year. Dr. Kettles, uh, sets up a meeting in the spring, uh, for folks to come in and have input. And then we also meet with the Choctaw Nation in the spring, uh, to get input from them and kind of visit back on, bet back and forth on what we're doing in this area and then, uh, what they have available to kind of be on the same page. So, this is our Indian policies and procedures for next year.
I make a motion to approve the Indian policies and procedures.
Second. Motion made by David, seconded by Brett to, um, accept the reevaluation and consideration of Indian policies and procedures. David?
Yes.
Brett?
Yes.
Kenny?
Yes.
Jennifer?
Yes.
And Susie, yes. Action topic C, consideration of Stigler Schools hosting the Eastern Oklahoma Band Directors Association Honor Band Clinic on January seventeenth, twenty twenty-two and the E O B D A concert on February fifth, twenty twenty-two.
Okay, and we've done this, we've held this for several years and they're recommending, just asking for permission to be able to hold, uh, honor band here once again this year.
Make a motion to approve the honor band concert in Stigler on January seventeenth, twenty twenty-two.
Second. Motion made by Brett, seconded by Jennifer to accept the Stigler Schools hosting the Eastern Oklahoma Band Directors Association Honor Band Clinic on January seventeenth, twenty twenty-two and the E O B D A concert on February fifth, twenty twenty-two. Brett?
Yes.
Jennifer?
Yes.
Kenny?
Yes.
David?
Yes.
And Susie, yes. Action topic D, consideration of approval of the adoption of the following policies. Number one, student transfers F E. Number two, student transfers for children of teachers F E F. Number three, transfers for special education students F E H. And number four, equal opportunity education scholarship tax credit, C D C C.
Okay, first, uh, our new student transfers policy, and this is something that, uh, is by statute. We had legislation last spring, summer, uh, that addressed, uh, new transfer policy. And so, uh, basically, um, if you look down toward the bottom of the first page, where it has one, two, and three, right above that, it says the policy of the Board of Education, that any legally transferring student shall be accepted by the district under the following exceptions. Number one, the district has the capacity to accept the student at grade level at the school site. And we'll talk about capacity for our district here in just a moment. Number two, the transferring student has not been disciplined and it has a discipline component. So, if, uh, they've been, A, violation of school regulations at their other school, uh, B, possession of an intoxicating beverage uh, or stolen property, or C, possession of a dangerous weapon or controlled da- dangerous substance, uh, at their former school. Those would be criteria to not accept a, a transfer.
How is this different than what it has been?
Well, and then, in the, in the past, what we've had, we've had an open transfer, an emergency transfer. And it's been the, at the discretion of both districts, whether a, a student transfers or not. And, uh, open transfers, they have a window in the spring that they can apply for an open transfer. And that's what we're under as of tonight. And, uh, uh, then we can accept that or reject it. And once you're on an open transfer, it's for the rest of your school career. Uh, if it's during a year, a student can, uh, or a parent can apply for an emergency transfer. If that's granted, it's, it's good for the rest of that school year and then they have to reapply. It's, uh, right now, and either one of those is at the discretion, there's, there's no bullet points. It's at the discretion of those districts. Uh, they've put this in, basically, uh, they're saying they put these other points, the main thing that they wanted to look at was number one. You, if you've got the room, pretty much you, you have to take them unless they've had discipline issues, number two. Or number three, uh, the student has a history of, of absences and we'd call that chronic absenteeism.
So, this takes the discretion of the districts out of it, is that more or less what's happening?
Uh, somewhat, somewhat.
Of course, this is a required by law, so you don't, there's nothing.
The policy is written right by the statute. Um, so you have those three that you look at, uh, if you're at capacity, if there's discipline issues at the former school or if there's a, a history of chronic absenteeism, which would be, um, unexcused absences. If you look on the second page, here's one thing that we had to set in it. We had to set our capacity and you can see our capacity at each grade level. If you look at the, uh, grades pre-K through five, what we did starting out is we took the number of teachers that we have in that grade level, multiplied it by twenty-two basically. And I'm sorry, that's, uh, a grade pre-K through four. So, we just did that right now. And on these capacities, we as a board are gonna have to review this every quarter. So, we're gonna come back to you in the March board meeting, it has to be done by April first. And we're gonna say, hey, basically, these capacities are working or they're not, we need to adjust it or not. And then we'll do it again in June and so forth. Um, at the higher levels, what, what we wanted to do right now, we don't wanna play any games that we, we don't wanna accept any students and try to limit it by capacity right now. But we set it at where all of our grade levels, we had rooms, room to accept transfers unless they didn't meet those other two, like discipline issues and chronic absenteeism. So, these are the numbers we kind of, to start out with on this. Um, on that second page, two of three, down at about halfway down, it says, the school district shall enroll transfer students in the order in which they submit their applications. So, if we're at capacity in second grade and we have three students on a waiting list and we have a spot come open, then it says, we just go back on that application and whoever applied first gets in. And that protects against, uh, favoritism and that kind of thing possibly. Um, if accepted, down toward the bottom of that page, if accepted, a student transfer is granted for the existing school year and may continue to attend in future years. At the end of the school year, the district may deny continued transfer of a student due to capacity or for disciplinary reasons or history of absences. So, you're gonna review that at the end of the year, each year, and make adjustments if you need them.
This gives you, the other transfer really didn't give you a way out either, did it? I mean, you pretty much had to take, this gives you a way out with disciplinary actions that have been taken against. A student trying to come into our district, you can just say no, you know, or whatever.
At the end of the year, you're going to evaluate that basically, yeah. And, uh, then if you look on the third page, I just made a note, uh, down at the bottom where it says legal note. I believe it may say that on yours, legal note, Senate Bill seven eighty-three repealed the former statute effective March thirty-first, twenty twenty-one. Oklahoma law no longer allows emergency transfers of students. Oklahoma law regarding transfers will change January one, twenty-two. And that's when this, we have to have something in place, uh, basically when we come back from Christmas break. Um, the, on, uh, policy, that was policy F E, on policy F E F, a part of the statute is that deals with student transfers of, of children of, of teachers. So, if we have a, a teacher that has a, a child that wants to transfer into the district, this automatically allows that. And then F E H, transfer for special ed students, it has to be a little different. Because, um, if you look at those three points it gives, number one, uh, the school district shall establish availability of appropriate programs, staff and services. In special ed, we can't go. In special ed, we can't go just directly on capacity, 'cause if you'll take a special ed teacher in a resource room, their limitations are not just purely on number of kids. It depends on, do I have that kid all day? There are a certain number of points. But, or if I just do that kid's paperwork and they're mainstreamed all day, that's a lot less points for that kid, and so on. And they can only have so many points in their, in their class. So you can't just sheerly say they can only have ten kids. It goes on a point system with special ed teachers, so it has to be a little bit different. And then, so basically, what we would state in number one is, do we have the appropriate program? Do we have a, a, you know, a program for math computation or ED or whatever it might be? We'd have the program. Do we have a staff, and is our staff at their point capacity? And then do we have the services that that student needs? If he's severely handicapped, do we have those services that we could render for that student? Number two, before that student is allowed to transfer, there has to be a joint IEP conference, Individual Education Plan Conference, between the special ed departments at each one of those two districts. And then number three, simply saying that upon approval of the transfer, the receiving district shall claim the student, and they're gonna get the funding for that student, which that's gonna be the case with any transfer student.
You know, it seems like we had a student once that had IEP or disability or that we had to buy housing and a car, paid mileage to go to McAllister, wasn't it? Now, if we don't accept that student, do we have to pay that? Do you know, or is it, I mean, or does a school, if they're transferring, how, how does that work?
That, that was a different, and, and their senior year, you have transition services that we, uh, by law are supposed to give that student, offer to that student. How are you gonna trans- transition from high school into college, into the workplace, or whatever? And there was a question of that. And so what we decided to do in that case was to offer what you're talking about. Because we didn't cross her, cross her Ts and dot her Is when we were doing that.
This helps that, though, this transfer side of that, as far as this.
Yeah, I don't know if it fit that exactly, but, yeah. But if we have that kid, just like every special ed education student, their senior year, we have to offer those transition services. And so we recommend on those that we approve all three of those for the regular ed student transfer FE. And then, uh, for the student transfers for children of teachers, FEF. And then transfers for special ed students, FEH.
You wanna put that other one in there, and we just do them all?
You're gonna go ahead and do the last one?
Tax credit.
Okay, and then the, the next one is the Equal Opportunity Education Scholarship Tax Credit. And I think there were, I know Ms. Wyatt, I think some others did, went in at the school board conference and went into a session dealing with tax credits. And so this is dealing with that, and we're getting ready to go into tax season twenty-two. So recommendation from the School Board Association was to go ahead and adopt this. We've talked about, and we've met with, uh, we've had a couple Zoom meetings about public school foundations. We're not anywhere close to that, okay? But if you look at the top part of that, in the, in the top paragraph, I'm just gonna read that. For the purpose of Oklahoma Equal Opportunity Education Scholarship Act, Stigler Schools established this policy regarding donations made to the school district authorized to accept tax credit donations as established below, which may be eligible for a tax credit. And just for clarification, if someone donated money to us up till now, up till January first, that, they could get a tax deduction for that. This allows for that same money donated to be eligible for a tax credit in, instead of a tax deduction. And then it talks about, um, kind of the things that go along with that. For an individual donation during a single year, taxpayers may receive up to a fifty percent tax credit of the total amount of contributions, not to exceed one thousand dollars for single individuals, two thousand dollars for married individuals filing jointly, or a hundred thousand dollars for any taxpayer which is a legal business entity as provided under the act. Uh, taxpayers who make an eligible contribution to Stigler Public Schools and make a written commitment to contribute the same amount for, for an additional year may be eligible for a credit up to seventy-five percent. So if they, um, uh, do a donation this year and then sign an agreement to do the same for the following year, it can be seventy-five percent. Any taxpayer making a contribution under this provision is responsible for providing evidence of the written commitment to the Oklahoma Tax Commission at the time of filing a refund claim. And then it goes on, uh, here, and each district has a limit each year on that tax credit of two hundred thousand dollars in donations. If it was to exceed two hundred thousand, then those tax credits would be pro-rated. Or you can, it allows that a person can carry over a portion of that tax credit to the succeeding year. When we, when a person does that, and I have that here, actually, this is a sample letter or sample documents, I'm sorry. The first one is just a broadcast, a letter sent out.
I'll look at names.
I think. No, here. The first one is a, a sample letter, just sending out information to, to patrons, talking about what the tax credit is and explaining it. And we would just adapt that to Stigler Public Schools. That's the first two pages, and that's just kind of explaining kind of what I talked about, uh, the importance of it and that kind of thing. On page, the third page, template thank you letter for donors for the tax credit. If someone gave a donation at the end of the tax year, uh, I think it's before in January of the next year, then you send out this thank you letter. The last page is a donor agreement. When they come in, I wanna make a five hundred dollar donation to the school. They fill out this donor agreement, and then they take, at the end of the year, tax time, they take that donor agreement along with that thank you letter to your tax preparer, and that's your documentation for that tax credit for that year. Like, this is something that private schools, you know, public schools have had foundations for years, but it's been a deduction. Now they've opened up that tax credit side to public schools, basically, basically, 'cause they didn't wanna take it away from the private schools, is kind of the, the gist of what, what happened. So we would like to take advantage of that, so anybody, uh, if we said someone wanted to come in, donate to the building fund for capital improvements, then, or, uh, we'll kind of look at going into January and February, how we wanna set that up and how we want that to look. But we'd like to take advantage of that, uh, and be a part of it. So that's our policies.
Make a motion to approve the adoption of the following policies as listed.
Motion made by Kenny, and seconded by Jennifer, to, to approve the adoption of the following policies. Number one, the student transfers as listed. Number two, student transfer for children of stu- of teachers as listed. Number three, transfers for special education students as listed. Four, equal opportunity education scholarship tax credit as listed. Kenny?
Yes.
Jennifer?
Yes.
David?
Yes.
Brett?
Yes.
And Susie, yes. Action topic E, consideration of change or revision to previous bid contract between Stigler Public Schools and Middle Roof Contractors Incorporated.
Okay, and if you, we talked about, at first, we had that, their bid proposal was for bids A, B, C. D was kind of a miscellaneous bid. We went back and had them, uh, take out of there the, the things that we actually needed to stop leakage right now, uh, at the middle and high school. So if you look at that, the change order or revision document, and right under where it says the contract is changed as following, as follows, it says deduct base bids B and C, and then add in additional work as outlined in the attached proposal. So if you look, um, at that, we go from all of those being seven hundred and sixty-four thousand eight hundred, and, and I'm gonna kind of, I'll show you kind of what we're talking about up here. And then that would, that change order would take us from that amount to this work at three hundred and ninety-six thousand. So, and then we, we'll come back and address the other two at a later date, what we wanna do. So this is the middle school, once again. And if you look at these different numbers at the middle school, replace screws in existing, in existing roof panels, and that'll be on any, anywhere on these sloped roofs that needs that. Install lo- larger gutter and reflash wall and push down spouts over a panel. That's right back here. We have pretty major leakages right here. And once again, that goes from where this annex, this add-on back here, is attached to that main building. We have some pretty severe leaking problems back here, so that's to take care of that. And then three, repair, re- uh, replace any damaged roof boots, flashing, uh, roof jacks, any of that on these buildings here. Then we go to the high school simulator. Repair, replace any damaged roof boots, uh, around your HVAC units. Repair damaged, uh, flashing. I can barely read that. Repair any damaged flashing, and we're talking about, uh, one, two, and three. Right in that, can't tell which number it is. But that's gonna be, uh, replacing any, replacing all the screws with a neoprene, uh, replacing any boots, any roof jacks that, on the building itself. And then, um, number five is coming right back here on the backside of the, uh, band room. We have guttering problems that's causing leakage back into the building. Taking care of that. Reflash duct and wall that leaks. That's down here on the backside. I'm gonna say the bus garage, that's not the bus garage, it's back there. And then, uh, seven is leakage problem boots and things here on this building. And then, uh, we will cover this wall, if you'll see this outline. This one is gonna be hard to ever seal that wall, so we're just gonna, uh, put a metal, we'll just wrap it in metal where it's outlined there. And then eight is a new sloped roof on top of the back of this media center. Okay? And then going back to the, uh, middle school, the other part that we've already approved, we have on the original contract, is the sloped roof on this flat, uh, part of that middle school gym, right here. And that'll be a sloped red roof right there.
So this, this quote doesn't have anything to do with the sidewalk and the awning around the middle school or the awning at the high school?
Yeah, right now, it's leaving out all of the awning stuff at the middle school, awning the passageways and that, kind of generally, at the middle school.
And we're not doing that now, or?
We're just holding off, because we'll go ahead, we'll get this done, about four hundred thousand, get our claim back, and then move forward.
And that include that, I guess, the move forward, we'll do the awning at the high school that we approved, we approved all that, right, already?
Mm-hmm, yeah.
This is work at high school gym, exclude work at high school gym, so you're not doing anything?
Nothing contracted with them at this time. We're looking at these things.
Yeah. And that's a change order?
This is a change order, and then if we approve this, then tomorrow, I will sign the original contract along with this change order and get it sent to them.
No, we're not. So the other stuff is still, we don't have to bring it, do we have to bring it back to vote on it again? Or are you doing what the awning and stuff like that we're talking about? So we gotta bring it back to vote on it again?
We'll, we'll probably just, we'll just bring it back when we're ready to do it, so we're all on the same page.
This is gonna start pretty quick?
Yes, we'll okay it, and we've sent them things like tax exempt letters, all of that, to be ready to go when they, we told them the, we had a little, uh, Ms. Wyatt came in. We had a committee of teachers, a couple of community members come in. I think that was pretty close after our last board meeting. And to kind of have some feedback on when we get to colors, like the color of that middle school roof that people are gonna see, and they were kind of looking at going with, uh, red, and then go with a complementary color down below. And haven't gotten that far yet, but, uh, we've got that group that, when we get to what color should we go with? Facades and things, I don't wanna be making those decisions, and I want some input on that, so we can kind of go with what.
What mauve or pink or?
That's why we have a group, so they don't pick mauve.
No. Hope they're not the options.
Make a motion, we approve the MRC change order, an amount of three hundred and ninety-six thousand.
Second. Motion made by Brett, seconded by Jennifer, to accept the change order revision to the previous bid contract between Stigler Public Schools and Middle Roof Contractors Incorporated. Brett?
Yes.
Jennifer?
Yes.
Kenny?
Yes.
David?
Yes.
And Susie, yes. It's time to move on to executive session A, proposed executive session to discuss and act upon the following business pursuant to twenty-five Oklahoma statute three oh seven B, one of the Open Meeting Act. Number one, discussion of resignation of Gerald Morris, route and trip, uh, bus driver, effective December thirty-first, twenty twenty-one. Number two, discussion to employ grade school cook for the remainder of the twenty-one, twenty-two school year. Number three, discussion to employ a grade school custodian for the remainder of the twenty-one, twenty-two school year. And number four, assessment of the performance of Superintendent David Morgan and renewing of his contract for the twenty-two, twenty-three school year.
Make a motion to convene a decision.
Kenny, and then who?
David.
Okay, um. Motion made by Kenny and seconded by David, eight fifty-two, to turn the board to open session. Kenny?
Yes.
David?
Yes.
Or did you do?
David.
David, okay. Brett?
Yes.
Jennifer?
Yes.
And Susie, yes. Uh, members present during executive session were David Huggins, Brett Warm, Kenny Whitson, Susan White, and Jennifer Turner. Uh, Mr. Morgan was also present during, uh, the first beginning, the beginning of executive session, and then he was asked to leave for a few moments. Uh, no votes or motions were made during executive session.
Make a motion to accept Gerald Morris's resignation.
A second. A second. Motion made by Kenny, seconded by Jennifer to accept the resignation of Gerald Morris, route and trip bus driver effective December thirty-first, twenty-twenty-one. Kenny?
Yes.
Jennifer?
Yes.
David?
Yes.
Brett?
Yes.
And Susie, yes.
Make a motion to accept hiring Melissa Hale and Gloria Lefler, grade school cook.
A second. Motion made by Kenny, seconded by Jennifer to employ grade school cook Melissa Hale and Gloria Lefler for the remainder of the twenty-one, twenty-two school year. Kenny?
Yes.
Jennifer?
Yes.
David?
Yes.
Brett?
Yes.
And Susie, yes.
Make a motion, we employ Shannon Webster as grade school custodian for the remainder of the twenty-two, twenty-one, twenty-two school year.
A second. Motion made by David, seconded by Jennifer to employ Shannon Webster, grade school custodian for the remainder of the twenty-one, twenty-two school year. David?
Yes.
Jennifer?
Yes.
Brett?
Yes.
Kenny?
Yes.
And Susie, yes.
Motion to approve the renewing of the contract for Superintendent David Morgan for the twenty-two, twenty-three school year.
Second. Motion made by David, seconded by Jennifer to accept the reemployment of Superintendent David Morgan in renewing of his contract for twenty-two, twenty-three school year. David?
Yes.
Jennifer?
Yes.
Brett?
Yes.
Kenny?
Yes.
And Susie, yes.
Hundred protests.
Any new business?
Shocking, isn't it?
Any new business?
No, I'm sorry. His train, his train's headed different.
His train.
Make a motion there. Second.
Okay, Kenny and Brett, right?
Yeah.
Motion made at eight fifty-four, by Kenny, seconded by Brett, to adjourn. Kenny? Brett?
Yes.
David?
Yes.
Jennifer?
Yes.
And Susie, yes. Next regular meeting, January tenth, twenty-two.